I call this the September 17th, 2019, meeting of Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. Our invocation tonight will be given by Brother Ennis Hyman, and our pledge will be given by Libby Perry. Libby's a senior at Lincoln County High School where she's a historian for the interact club. Libby has been in several carriage house plays, and she's the daughter of Nathan and Elizabeth Perry. If you would stand for our invocation, remain standing for our pledge.
If you would bow your heads with me. Most gracious heaven and father, we thank you for this day, and for the blessings of life, and most of all, for your wonderful salvation, for the plan that you came up with to save us all if we'd come to know you as our lord and savior, and give us a home in heaven someday. Now, father, I can't help but think of your blessings and all your goodness and the rain you've given us, but we're surely needing some more now, and if you would, send some our way. We pray for those people that have had a hard time because of the weather. We ask you to be with them, and give them a place to live, and somehow to get through this until these hurricanes have passed and the season's over with. Now, lord, this time, this meeting where they've come together to make important decisions, to vote according as to how they see it, and certainly believe it to be, and ask you to be with the mayor and these commissioners, and bless this county, that we might all pull together for the betterment, and for the kingdom of God, in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. If you would at this time, please answer the electronic roll call.
I've not seen commissioners present, five absent.
Okay. At this time, for announcements, I got Mr. Jack Towery, former commissioner, came in to see me today with some good news. He is, I know y'all been, he's been struggling with, about with cancer, and he went, had his scan, and it's all clear, so we thank the lord for that blessing. Would like for you to ask you if y'all would keep Ms. Diane Buchanan in your prayers. Over the weekend, she broke her ankle, and she's gonna be homebound for a while, for about four weeks, and then we just have to see what the doctors say after that, so if you'll keep her and Mr. Jimmy Buchanan in your prayers, I'd appreciate it. Next item, we've got, we had a special call meeting in our regular meeting last month. Is any objection to a motion for approval for both those meetings? Okay, Mr. Bradford, Commissioner Bradford, Commissioner Douglas seconds it. Any questions, comments, or corrections on any of that? All those in favor of approval of the two meetings, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. At this time in September, we do the election of the chair of the county legislative body. The person who can serve there can be any member of this commission or the county mayor. And at this time, I would like to turn over the chair to Mr. Donnie Ogle for the election. Mr. Cunningham, our current pro tem, is feeling a little under the weather, so I'll turn it over as the chairman of the commission at this time, passing the gavel over. Mr. Ogle, for the election of the chairman.
Okay, the floor will be open for the election of the chairman of the legislative body term to expire on September of 2020. The floor now be open for nominations.
Motion to reelect Bill Newman.
Second. Of motion and second to reelect our chairman, Bill Newman, Mayor Newman, as chairman, do we hear any more nominations?
Motion ceased.
Have motion nomination ceased, and properly second. All in favor, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
The chairman, you've been properly reelected.
Thank you, ma'am.
I do appreciate it. I appreciate the commission too, that I think we're working well together, and we're getting a lot accomplished, and thank you for your vote of confidence. Now, our next item is election of chairman pro tem for the legislative body. That term would expire also next September, 2020. Floor is now open for nominations for that position.
Nominate Doug Cunningham.
Doug Cunningham has been nominated in second. Any other nominations from the floor? Do you hear a motion that nomination ceased, and we elect him by acclamation?
Second.
All those in favor of electing Doug Cunningham by acclamation as a pro tem, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously elected. You should have received 15 committee meeting minutes in your packet. If you didn't get all of those, let us know, and we'll get them to you. Any questions on any of those? Our next item, consideration for approval of Suicide Prevention Month Resolution.
This is a resolution, Suicide Prevention Month Resolution, whereas suicide is one of the most disruptive and tragic events a family and a community can experience, whereas research reveals that suicide, the suicide rate in the United States is the highest since the Great Depression, and in the U.S., 1 million people attempt suicide each year, and whereas for every one documented death by suicide, there are 25 attempts. And whereas 3,338 Tennesseans have died by suicide over the last three years, one person aged 45 to 54 every two days, one person over the age of 65 every three days, and one person between the ages of 10 and 24 every four days. And whereas, as a result, suicide is the ninth leading cause of all deaths in Tennessee, with more than 1,000 lives lost in Tennessee each year. And whereas suicide is the leading cause of death for children ages 10 through 17, and the second leading cause of death among youth ages 10 through 24. And whereas public awareness of this tragic problem is the key to preventing further suffering and loss of life, and the risk for human self-destruction can be reduced through awareness, education, and treatment, as the highest risk for suicide is among the survivors of those who died by suicide, or those who have attempted suicide. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Lincoln County body, legislative body, that all residents are encouraged to take time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, a message, handshake, or a hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Be it further resolved that the month of September, 2019, be designated, designated as the month all Lincoln Canyons focus on suicide education and prevention. There's a place for Bill Newman, county mayor, and also a place for William Michael Wizinett, city fable mayor, and Phyllis F. Collins, county mayor, to sign off.
Yeah. So we got three copies.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Over approved.
Motion approved, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell, made by Commissioner Ogle. Any discussion on this item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Thank you, commission. Next item, consideration for approval of resolution for local government participation in electronic monitoring indigency fund, and the 1-on-1 general fund budget amendment associated with the program. Cole Bradford, our financial man.
I'm not going to read the resolution unless someone wants me to, but basically what this does, this is for ignition interlock and non-interlock devices, for alcohol and drug-related offenses, for indigent offenders. In the past, the state has paid 100% of both of those. In 2019, basically, the General Assembly passed legislation that shifted the cost of, the burden of the non-interlock devices, a 50/50 cost share with local government. So, we spend very little on that, or the state has spent very little on the non-interlock devices, so we think 2,500 would be an adequate budget. But the way I look at it, we either pay 100% and not participate, or participate, and the state will share the cost at 50%. So, I do recommend approval of the resolution and the 1-on-1 budget amendment.
Are there any questions? First. I would entertain a motion for that approval, please. Commissioner Taylor makes a motion, seconded by Mr. Dangerfield. Any other questions? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Excuse me. The next five items, Ms. Nancy Harris, Planning and Zoning Director.
Your first one is file number ZR 2019-4. This was a public hearing that was held this evening with no comments. This was reviewed at the Planning Commission on July 11th, approved as submitted, and what this will do is for the county to adopt the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, to go along with the other codes that we have. At the public hearing, there were no comments.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Make motion to approve.
Mr. Bradford makes a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Ewing is recognized. Need a microphone, please.
Nancy, let me just ask you, are we gonna have to pay a permit if I'm gonna put a hot tub in my patio, or are you gonna come and get a permit?
Yes, you will. And the reason why, it's a safety factor. If you have any body of water, the code says that you have to have a minimum four-foot wall or enclosure, and that the sides of the hot tub, if it's four foot, you're good. But that's what it checks, is to make sure that you have that safety factor.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Holland?
What about the swimming pool?
What about the swimming pool?
Yes. What's the regulations on, like, a personal swimming pool at someone's home?
Pools and the swimming pool code, pretty much the same thing. If you don't have a fence around it, and it's in ground, you do need to have a minimum fence around it, minimum four-foot fence. The lock needs to be up at the top, so a child can't unlatch it and drown, and that's the premise of the whole code. If it's above ground, the, again, the wall of the pool, most of them are at least four foot. You just make sure that the ladder is removable or locking, so a child can't go up the ladder and potentially drown. You're welcome.
Any other, Commissioner Thor?
I was just curious, how many, have we had some issues with folks drowning, or how many folks have died in the past year for a hot tub?
None that I know of, but one is enough.
Okay, so, so no one that you know of has, we've never had an issue?
No.
Any other questions? Commissioner Ogle's recognized.
How much is the permit?
$25? Yeah, $25.
Any other questions? Let's electronic vote on this item, please.
13 aye, 6 no, and 5 absent.
It passes. Next item.
Your next item, and incidentally, next month, we'll have file numbers on these, to make it a little bit easier to see which staff report to look at. The next one is file number ZR 2019-5. This deals with tiny homes. In your, in your packet, you have my staff report. This went before the Planning Commission on September 5th, and is coming to you tonight to call for a public hearing. This will interject tiny homes as being a suitable type of dwelling. Let's see. And this will be just within the A1 agricultural forestry rural residential zoning. And the reason why it's coming up is the state recognizes tiny homes as being a trend, I guess is the best word, for affordable housing for a lot of people, and we do, believe it or not, get a lot of calls on tiny homes.
Any question on this? This is a call for public hearing next month prior to our commission meeting.
At 5:30.
Okay, motion to approve by Commissioner Thor. Commissioner Jean seconds it. Any questions? All those in favor of calling for the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously passes. Next item, Ms. Harris.
Your next one is file number ZR 2019-6, and this is also to call for public hearing for the October 15th County Commission Meeting, 5:30. This went before the Planning Commission, September 5th, approved as written. This is to, let's see, refresh my memory here. Oh, okay. In our zoning resolution, there's, there's two areas that kind of contradict each other. One area says that if it's agricultural, you're allowed up to three dwellings within A1. You have to have 15 acres or greater green belt, bona fide green belt filed with the tax assessor's office. Then if you go into the A1 zone, it says that you can have it, but only by special exception of the Board of Zoning Appeals. My request is to scratch that special exception request. It is permitted within the A1 zoning. So this is to call for public hearing.
Okay, what's the will of the commission? Commissioner Hunter made that motion. Commissioner Hunter makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Revis. Any questions on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a real problem with A2 lots. It's just too small. You can't even, in reality, you're talking about 15 feet from the back set, from the back line, and you put a little shed or something, and it's in the middle of the backyard.
That's the next item, right?
The next item.
Yeah. It's on the next one. This is where you could put, if you're under green belt with 15 acres or more, for proposed agricultural use, you could have two homes or mobile homes on that property under the o-
Two additional.
Additional.
Total.
Besides, besides the main residence. Okay, we all right on, that's the reason we're gonna add to it next time, these file numbers, because it took me a while to figure them out too, so, but that's coming up next, Commissioner Ogle.
Okay.
Any more questions on this? Know which one we're calling again for the public hearing next month on this. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item, Ms. Harris.
This is file number ZR 2019-7. Planning Commission heard it on September 5th, approved as written. This is to also call for public hearing for your October 15th, 2019 meeting at 5:30. This is to, this is actually a housekeeping item. Again, in the zoning resolution, in one section, it talks about accessory structures, maintaining certain setbacks, and then when you go to the A2 zoning district, it says that you have to maintain 15 feet. One says five feet, one says 15 feet, so this is housekeeping to, and the recommendation is to strike the 15 feet, and keep it at five, which is where it is already in the accessory structures.
Okay, what's the will of the commission on this item?
I'm still confused.
Okay, this one is-
I thought I was talking about the other.
Okay, this one, this one is under, under A2, you could build a, an additional structure, not the main, that would be within five feet of the back line, am I correct?
Like a shed, or carport, detached garage.
It could be on A1 or A2.
Yeah, in, in the zoning resolution, it says that accessory structures within residential districts, which is A1, A2, are to be five feet. That's, that's the minimum setback. And then, and then again, when you go into A2, it changes all of a sudden to 15. So I think it was a typo, somebody slid a one in.
Okay. So if you've got a house that's got the setback lines on it, but then if you're building a accessory structure, it can go back as close as five feet to your back property line, if we change it?
Rear insides. Unless you're a corner lot, then it changes.
I would entertain a motion one way or the other. This is for the public hearing. Okay, Commissioner Taylor makes a motion.
I'll second.
Commissioner Jean seconds it. Any questions before we vote? Do y'all understand? All right, we're calling for a public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Ms. Harris.
And the last one is file number 2019-R4. This went before Planning Commission, September 5th, approved as written. This is to call for a public hearing for your October 15th, 2019 meeting at 5:30. This is a rezoning request, to rezone 1.70 acres from A1 agricultural forestry rural residential to A2 suburban residential, to create two independent lots. This property is contiguous with A2. I think it's right across the street, so, all for public hearing.
What's, what's the will of the commission on this item?
No reproach.
Second by Commissioner Young. Any questions on this item?
This is existing buildings already there, right?
Yes, sir. What it's doing is, the houses are already existing, and it's giving them individual lots per house.
Okay. This is for a public hearing for that item. All, any other questions? All in favor of approving the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no.
Thank you.
Unanimously approved. Thank you, Ms. Harris. Next item, consideration for approval to reelect Donnie Ogle, Jack Ashley, and Dr. Bill Edwards to the Health Facility Committee. Those terms would expire October 2022. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion, they be approved. Commissioner Bradford seconds it. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Congratulations, and thank you for y'all's service. Next item, our Main Street report, Ms. Lauren Honee, our Main Street Director. Grady, could you give that report for us then? Well, I guess we'll wait till next month then.
Main Street.
Yeah. That's the kind of report we like, nice and sure, you did a great job. You may have a job after this meeting. All right, Commissioner Ogle, looks like we're down to Budget Committee report.
Budget, Budget Committee meeting report for the September 17th, 2019, regulation of Board of Commissioners. Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, met pursuant to due notice in the courthouse basement conference room on September 4th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. Members present were Steve Graham, Shirley Dangerfield, Grady Revis, Donnie Ogle, Kate Ewing, Randy Bradford, Ricky Bryant, and Doug Cunningham. Others present were county mayor Bill Newman, finance director Cole Bradford, county attorney Ed Sims, school board member Johnny, Johnny Collins, Lucy Williams with the Up Valley Times, Commissioner Darren Walker, Commissioner Anthony Taylor, Commissioner Stephanie Britt, Commissioner Steve Guntenberg, director of schools, Dr. Bill Heath, Commissioner Tori Young, school board member Sammy Tucker, Commissioner Steve Spray, Commissioner Charles Hunter, Commissioner Glenn Douglas, Commissioner Jack Ashley, Commissioner Mark Mitchell, and school board chairman Tommy Stevenson, school board member Jared Bradley, school board member Kevin Posey, and school board member Jennifer Haynes. Item one, finance director Bradford presented the following items. A, sheriff surplus vehicle and request to sell two Tahos to the Ardmore Police Department, and one Tahoe to the Petersburg Police Department. Had a motion by Commissioner Ewing, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of declaring the attached vehicle surplus to be sold, with the two vehicles identified on the attached document, to be sold to Ardmore for $27,000, for $27,500, and the one vehicle identified on the attached document be sold to Petersburg for $13,500.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Are the group approved.
Commissioner Guntenberg makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle.
Lincoln, Lincoln County clerk had a budget amendment for $5,500, $5,900, to be paid out of her data processing. Motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached Lincoln County Clerk 101 Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Motion approved.
Commissioner Bradford makes that motion, seconded by Commissioner Hunter. Any questions on this item? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle.
C, excuse me, unclaimed property resolution. We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached unclaimed property resolution.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Revis makes a motion. Commissioner Taylor seconds it. Any questions? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle.
D, 141 general purpose school fund budget amendment. There's two of those, I can get it up big enough to read it. The first one for $130,011, to set up the state E Plan approved budget for 2019, 20 coordinated school health grant. State portion is $105,000, with the local match being $25,011. Number two is for $2,000, to reflect the Tennessee- Number two is for $2,000 to reflect the Tennessee score money received from the state of Tennessee in 2018-19. It will be used in the 2019-20 budget for visits to Putman County by teachers, administrators, and supervisors. We had a motion by Commissioner Ogle, seconded by Commissioner Revis, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Who made, Commissioner Hunter made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Revis. Any questions on this item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item.
E143 Centralized Cafeteria Fund Budget Amendment. As far as $20,688.90 is received money that wasn't spent in the 2018-19 budget for the Tennessee Department of Education, 2019 breakfast after the bail grant, to be implemented after August 1st, 2019, and before the end of the 2019-20 school year. These funds can be used to purchase equipment and supplies that aim to increase access to school breakfast. No matches required. We had a motion by Commissioner Revis, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached 143 Centralized Cafeteria Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Make motion to approve.
Mr. Tyler makes a motion. Commissioner Jean seconds. Any questions? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle.
F, the train service agreement for the Lincoln County Jail is attached. Motion by Commissioner Ewing, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached train service agreement.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Mr. Douglas makes a motion. Commissioner Ewing seconds. Any questions? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item.
G, 101 General Fund Budget Amendment. There's one of those, it's for $15,190. It's a budget amendment for the purchase and installation of a new telephone system. The state health department is allowing Lincoln County to retain $15,190 of the local appropriation to fund the phone system. Had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Revis, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached 101 General Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission?
Make motion to approve.
Mr. Bradford makes a motion. Commissioner Mitchell seconds. Any questions? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle.
H, we had a USDA update, it was an information item. And then item two, there being no further business to be presented, we had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed to adjourn. Respectfully submitted to the September 2019 Regular Session of the County Legislative Body, Steve Graham Chairman, Donnie Ogle Secretary, Cole Bradford Recording Secretary. That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do we have, do we have a motion from that special call meeting?
I don't have it on here.
Do we have one, do we have to vote on that special call meeting?
You put them together. Yeah, you put them together.
That was on the minutes.
I don't have anything on mine.
Okay. There's nothing, okay. Excuse me. Thank you, Commissioner Ogle. Next item. Notary Publix. Madam Clerk?
Deborah Jackson by Commissioner Ogle, Mona Quick by Commissioner Hunter, William R. Askins by Commissioner Cunningham, Angela H. Bunch by Commissioner Brown, Cynthia Kosakowski by Commissioner Cunningham, Mary Jane Porter by Commissioner Brown, Joe D. Smith by Commissioner Cunningham.
Any additions? I ought to entertain a motion, approval of that list.
Make motion first.
Commissioner Bradford, I heard first, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions or comments before we call for a vote? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. They are unanimously approved. I now declare this meeting open for any new business that properly can come before us.
Motion to adjourn.
We got a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Mr. Thorpe makes the second. Commissioner Guntenberg made the motion. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. We're adjourned.